We good? All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking your time to be here today at City Hall and do the people's business. Welcome to the Committee of Public Works. This is a public hearing today. We're going to listen to everyone who's here today. Today is Monday, December 1st, 2025, and it is 5:33 o'clock PM. I want to say welcome to my colleagues, Councilman Miguel Sanchez, Councilman Pedro Spinal, Councilman Justin Royers, Councilwoman Tia Gray, and to the Solicitor Department. I better give you a name next time. And to Bob Azar. But especially to the people who comes in here and testify. Can you call, can you read item one, please? Sorry.
Petition from Dea M Vega and Christopher J Armstrong of 70 Brightwood Avenue in Joanne S. Kasha, I can't pronounce it. Thank you, of 45 Audubon Avenue, Annabelle E Suro and Matthew Arribas of 37 Audubon Avenue, requesting to abandon Falmouth Street.
City Sergeant, can you please bring me the list?
First one.
The first one? Thank you. Okay, I will have Bob Azar to talk about this item number one for now. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm Robert Azar. I'm the Deputy Director of the Department of Planning and Development. All street abandonment requests get reviewed by the City Plan Commission. This one, the abandonment of Falmouth Street, came to the City Plan Commission a few months ago, and the Commission made certain findings that are outlined in a letter that was forwarded to you. This is a, what we call a paper street. It's undeveloped. It shows up on the map, but on the ground, it's, it's, it's not paved. It's wooded, and it is not providing access to, for the public, to any property. It appears only to be useful to the property that it abuts. And in these circumstances, our policies indicate that this would be a good candidate for abandonment. These, the, the street would be made private property. It would be subdivided, and the land would be divided up among the abutting property owners. So the City Plan Commission recommends that the council approve this petition, subject to several conditions. One, that the abutters come to an agreement on a plan for abandonment and subdivision prior to appearing before the city council, and this has to be depicted on a survey. Number two, the petitioners shall apply for an administrative subdivision to merge the abandoned street with their respective properties. Three, the abandonment shall only apply to the portion of the street within Providence, and obviously, since you don't have jurisdiction there, shall not apply to North Providence. There is a tiny corner of this street within this block that is, is in the town of North Providence. And then finally, that the petitioners shall grant any necessary easements for access to property, utility, access, and maintenance.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we have somebody from, who represent in this property.
My name is George Luff, and I'm here on behalf of the petitioners. We've put together some pictorial identifications to, that show the wooded nature, the substantially wooded nature of the, of the property. There's a little bit that's asphalted here, so you can see that it's really not been in. We've been working with Bob Azar of the city, and, you know, our, you know, our agreement, or our position is exactly what he's saying. The only practical use probably in this case would be the abandonment. The abutters, all the abutters are in agreement with this. And I, you know, the next steps, I guess, would be ascribing a value to it, and, you know, delineating specifically where the elements would go to each of them. But they're essentially going to be, the parts next to the, the property are going to be long to the people who are right next to them. And there's already utilities in place on that property. So all of those utilities and all the access points for the utility would stay. There's nothing that's, there's no intent to create any hardscape or asphalting or anything like that. They want to leave it so that it's permeable for water.
Any questions from the colleagues?
Yes, so, I mean, that was one of the conditions that Mr. Azar pointed out, which is making sure that the abutters are in agreement, and you just asserted that they are.
In fact, I actually have a blow-up copy of the actual petition. Actually, has all the others.
I see that. And they, and they have no issues granting easement to the utility companies, right?
In fact, there's actively, there's utilities on this strip right now, and everyone sort of knows where they are. And that's one of the reasons why they don't want to do anything other than the vegetation that's on there, so that the access can continue to be had, for lack of a better, where you, you can see, it's this mulch and soft scape, I guess.
Well, thank you. I'm on set, Chair.
Me, Saltea, you have, that's your area, right?
Is that her area?
You said part of it is in North Providence? What part? Audubon Street, Brightwood? Audubon, okay. So that would be closer to Annabelle would have that, that section? Is that what you're saying? Okay. So these two are, I'm sorry. So John and Dyla are going to be splitting this area. Okay, okay, thank you. That's all.
That's her, right? All set, Miss Saltea?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from my colleagues? No? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We like to call Billy Coyle, Coily? Mr. Billy?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here representing the Tax Assessor's Office. We were asked to value this particular property of the original application. At that time, we received only the abandonment of the entire lot, and we had requested additional information so that we could identify what percentage of the property was going to which abutter. And with the part of the property being owned by the town of East North Providence, we were concerned with how much square footage of the 10,000 square foot was actually in Providence, so that we could identify the actual amount, so we could give you a value at your committee meeting. But, so we haven't done any of that yet, but I noticed they do have a different plan, but I'm not sure if it truly identifies only the Providence land.
Okay, so, come up again, please, Counselor. Talk to the microphone, please.
The survey document should just have the Providence square footage on there that the engineering company put together.
Okay, great. We just got that to see.
It's okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Right, item number two, petition from Dylan Conley, S Y A Conley Law Associates, 123 Dia Street, Suite 2B, Providence, Rhode Island, 02903, on behalf of 161 Ridge LLC, requesting to abandon a portion of Steel Street southerly of Woodbine Street.
Sergeant, can you please bring me page number two? Thank you. Okay, we have Mr. Azar again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steel Street, similar to the last item, is also an undeveloped paper street, and it's just a very short distance and provides access only to the abutting properties. There's a, there's a little kind of parking area at the end that seems to be used by some of the abutting properties. So again, the CPC found that this was not something that was, it was not in the public interest to keep this open, and it would be appropriate for abandonment. So CPC recommends to the council to approve the petition. Again, subject to three conditions. All abutters shall come to an agreement on a plan for abandonment prior to appearing before the council and depicted on a survey. The petitioner shall apply for an administrative subdivision to merge the abandoned street with respective properties, and that any necessary easements for access to property, utility, utilities and maintenance shall be granted.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have Billy, Bill Coily again?
Hello, Mr. Billy.
Okay.
Mr. Azar did point out all the things that we had concerns about. We did not value this property also. We were most concerned with Lot 315, which indicates that some of the land is going to go there, but there is another street that abuts, that we're not sure what the status is, and what we were trying to figure out for valuation purposes, whether this action was going to landlock 315. So that was part of our concern, and we didn't have any definitions as to where the particular parcels were being distributed. So we have placed no value, but Mr. Conley tells me that they will be getting some.
Okay, thank you very much. I have Mr. Nick Vasilev. Please. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Nick Vasilev. I am Lot 12 on this radius map, 64 Evergreen Street. Nick in Vasilev. V A S I L E F F. I'm against this abandonment. It is currently, Steel Street is currently the only way that I can access the back of my house without entering private property. The petition does mention that York Street is a way to access that. Currently, York Street is not passable. There's stockade fence going across it, as well as a lot of overgrowth and vegetation. I have lived at 64 Evergreen for, since October. I've already used Steel Street probably a dozen times to get to the back of my house to do basic maintenance. That's it. Thank you.
One question. Why do you have a front entrance, right?
I have a front entrance, but the, my property, the back of my house is literally on the back of my property line. So to access anything to do maintenance, to do any of that exterior work, including trimming away some of the overgrowth that's there that I've been doing, I need to get through Steel Street or ask neighbors to use their private property.
Thank you. Any questions from? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With Mr. DeMels, DeMels Williams?
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
William, says my wife Barbara Williams.
Good evening.
We're at 29 Woodbine Street. Oh, okay. We're at, all right, we're at 29 Woodbine Street. Daryl, Barbara. We noticed the, we got a, a letter the other day about the planning to build there. The problem we have right now is that we don't know where their parking would be. Right now, Woodbine Street is totally filled. And from what I understand is, we still don't have overnight parking in Providence, so we will have even more vehicles, because they plan on building a duplex, correct? So we're trying to figure out where they're going to put the vehicle traffic. That used to be an old playground back there where they're trying to build. And what they're calling Steel Street running into York Street was a pathway that the city maintained from Woodbine all the way over to, is it Doyle Avenue? They've slowly built up on those, on that property. So the, where they built before, they had how, parking, but right where they're trying to build right now, there is no parking there. There are no utilities there. So I'm just wondering how that's going to affect my property at 29 Woodbine? Where are they going to be having all this construction, traffic, everything? All right, so you wonder?
Yeah, and not only that, I was just talking with a neighbor next door, and he said that he hadn't received any notification about them wanting to build something at that 161, I guess, that LLC that's trying to build that duplex there. They're kind of just cramming things in, and it's kind of very tight there. And as the gentleman spoke earlier, he does need access to his own property through, through that little area. It's a very tight area, and even that little back alley behind the fence is so narrow. The, the parking situation is just really horrible on the east side as of now, because you have all the properties that were condo'd due to that condo time and era, when they were condo and everything. So you don't really have access for adequate parking. And I just think it's just going to be a strain. It, it just doesn't seem feasible to me to even build a property there. So that's my concern, and my concern also, again, is how is that going to affect us? Because, as I said, that area is, that area is very small and very tight, and those people that are parked there now, they actually need that for the property that's in front of that particular where, area where they're going to build at. So I, I don't even see it being feasible, in my personal opinion.
The area has become more for college students now, so most of the homeowners over there are leasing or renting out each floor. So there's almost two cars per floor. Those are three family houses over there. So we're talking at least six vehicles per property. So put another property with at least four more vehicles would, really doesn't seem to make sense at all. Especially since we're coming into winter now, and most of the students and the out-of-towners don't move their vehicles when we're supposed to have a parking ban, so the street doesn't get plowed.
We don't get plowed, yeah, that's true.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dylan Con, Conley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think the, a couple of notes right off the gate. I would love to connect with the neighbors. We would love to just kind of work it out so it makes sense for everyone. I have also been in communication with one of the other abutters just earlier today. It's the, the gentleman at 37-9 Woodbine, Lot 314. I do have correspondence from him and I to submit. He supports the abandonment. There are some conditions associated with his support. I wanted to, he's agreed to those in writing. I wanted to kind of submit it exactly as is. I didn't know if I could walk forward with, with copies for the committee. I, I agree with the neighbors that remarked on it being a tight lot. We think we can enhance the lot in the neighborhood through the abandonment of the public right of way. It's not really used as a public right of way. It does have some history of some negative nuisances. I have been in touch with the counselor in the area. In terms of access, we don't plan on building throughout the area, so we can work with, on easement access with our neighbors. Happy to communicate in detail with all of our neighbors about what their interests could be in terms of acquisition appraisal costs. You know, I am managing the subdivision and survey. I will basically just roll in the neighbors' concerns to my work and efforts on that front. You know, I'm also very happy to answer any questions, but generally, we have one very strong priority, which is just the 50% of the public right of way directly in front of our property, which is not much land. Our, our secondary sort of goal is to make everything work better for neighbors. I think the way that we can achieve that is through an abandonment of Steel Street from our property all the way out to Woodbine. As a portion of that, our neighbor immediately abutting Woodbine would gain parking. They'd be able to acquire 50% of the road. And then, as you can see in the correspondence from the neighbor at 314, that neighbor is roughly in agreement that we're going to be able to figure out how to do this together with an access easement, so that he can kind of get to his backyard as necessary, and we won't build anything within 10 feet of the property line. So with our two neighbors immediately abutting us on Woodbine, we have a conceptual agreement. At 41 Woodbine, we anticipate that neighbor gaining parking as a result of this abandonment. And at 314 Woodbine, we anticipate giving the neighbor additional protections. Thank you. As for where we would park, right now, our hope and our goal is to have a lot large enough to support a side-by-side duplex with integral parking. So the parking would be directly underneath the units. One side of the building would be essentially one unit. The other side would be another. I also heard concerns about rentals. We do plan it for it to be a for-sale product. We're not sure whether or not it would be two separate condos, but it is definitely designed to be home ownership, not to be rental. It's going to be a, a bit more of a, when you target home ownership, you do nicer finishes, you do fewer bedrooms than you would if you were just doing pure rental. We don't plan on holding it for pure rental. I also plan on being integral to the development myself. So if there are any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to sort of discuss them with the board and do what I can to commit to making sure the neighborhood is happy.
Okay, any questions from my colleagues? No questions? Yes, my opinion, yes, get in touch with the neighborhood, like these neighbors who came today and testified about the concern, and, and try to work it out with them. I know you, you will find a way to work it out.
I'd be very happy to do so, Mr. Chairman, especially with the gentleman that just spoke. Our original reach-outs came in June, July. This has not been a fast-moving project, so he's actually acquired the property after we did our reach-out, so I have missed him, and, and I'm thankful he's here this evening so that I can talk to him.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please read number three.
Item number three, petition from Mark Parati, MP, General Contractors, requesting the abandonment of Hillcrest Avenue, beginning at Woodside Road and extended to Platte 95, Lot 215, for the development of two duplex homes.
Okay. Mr. Sergeant, can I get the last page, please? Thank you. Okay, we have Mr. Bob Azar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have had some discussions with the petitioner, and I know that he's had some discussions with the Department of Public Works about how the property that he owns might be developed. This, this road services his property. It also provides some access to other pieces of property that, some that are developed, others that aren't developed. And we had a little bit of a concern about how abandoning the street might affect those other property. And we had some questions about whether it might be possible for him to develop this and keep the road open as a public right of way. And it seems like he's exploring that avenue. So I would, I would ask maybe for the petitioner to explain a little bit better what his thought process is. In any event, we have not taken this yet to the City Plan Commission, given that these discussions have been ongoing. So the Commission has not issued a recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bill Coine again? Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Assessors' Office has not valued any of these for similar reasons that were proposed here. We're not sure, because there are two houses on the front corner that already use it for their purposes, and we would assume that then they wanted to abandon it from the back of their property, backwards, but we weren't sure. And there's also people beyond the lots that they seek to be developed that we don't know by taking away their right of way, whether or not we'd be landlocking them. So we have not provided any values.
Okay, thank you. And we have Mr. Mark Amori? It's Mark? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
And looking at Hillcrest, the homes on the left and the right both have their own driveways. They use the abandoned street, but they do have access for parking, which they do use on the left. The home on the left has its own driveway on the left side, and the home on the right has its own driveway on the right side of theirs. They use the abandoned street as auxiliary parking for themselves. In regards to the actual abandonment or development of the street, that's right now under discussion with the city's planning department, as well as Public Works, as to what is the most effective way for the development of this property, whether it be my development, developing this, the road, and then turning it back over to the city, or an outright sale and abandonment of the property. But those discussions are still ongoing. I'm right now waiting for my surveyor to give me some paperwork so I can send it to the engineer for the city, as well as the planning department, and agree that we will all have a Zoom-type meeting to go over the effective use of, of this property and what would serve best in developing it.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is no more further business? There's no more further business on the public hearing agenda? This means? This meeting is now concluded. Thank you very much for everyone who came, and enjoy the rest of the night.